Good morning, everyone. The Senate EAGI Committee now convenes this April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, for the confirmation hearing of Mr. Anthony Iglesias Macaranas, nominated to lead the CNMI Department of Public Safety, and the time is now ten oh seven A M. Members of the EAGI Committee, distinguished guests, and to the viewing public, before we begin our hearing today, I would like to disclose what may be perceived as a conflict of interest. My husband is the baptismal sponsor of Mr. Macaranas's son. He is not the primary sponsor, but he is a sponsor nonetheless. And out of an abundance of caution, when Mr. Macaranas was nominated on February thirteenth, I immediately sought legal counsel and attempted to recuse myself. I now recognize the legal counsel, who will now address the committee and the public.
Based on that information, it is my opinion that there's no conflict in you serving in this committee.
Thank you, Council Bermudas. With that settled, the proceeding will move on. Mr. Macaranas, please call the role of the committee in session.
Senator Celina Arbabaute.
Present.
Senator Karina Elmagor.
I am here.
Senator Paul A. Mangonya.
Yes.
Senator Donald M. Mangonya.
Present.
Madam Chair, all members of the Senate EAGI Committee are present.
Thank you, Mr. Macaranas. I would now like to take care of some administrative matters. In Sena Grade, si cooperacion midzu, put fa bodna fan silen shu i telfon midzu, gen mismo hora. And now that you have been acquainted with the members of the EAGI Committee, I would like to introduce you to the staff assisting the committee in session this morning. First and foremost, our legal counsel, Mr. Jose Bermudas, our legislative assistant, Mr. Devin Macaranas. Handling our I T for this morning is the I T manager from the Legislative Bureau, Mr. Jonathan Diaz. And to keep order and decor at all times, we have two Sergeant-at-Arms present this morning. We have Mr. Benjamin Terlahe and Mr. John DeLeon Guerrero. Also, I would like to acknowledge the presence of Mr. L J Castro, who is with the Youth Congress, and he assists us with the photography in the chamber. For the record, the notice for today's meeting was published on April eighth, two thousand and four, in compliance with the Open Government Act. And I would like to recognize Senator Donald Mangonya for the proper motion to adopt today's agenda.
Motion to adopt today's agenda.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded. Are there any discussions on the motion? With no opposition, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, today's agenda is duly adopted. I would now like to invite the Acting Special Assistant, Mr. Paul Jean Paul B. Rages, the Acting Special Assistant, on behalf of Mr. Oscar Babata and Governor Palacios and Lieutenant Governor Apeteng to join us, and the nominee, Mr. Anthony Macaranas. Mr. Rages's role this morning is to introduce the nominee to the committee. Mr. Rages, you may begin when you are ready.
Good morning, Hafaday, Zantiro, Chairwoman Celina Arbabaute, honorable members of the Executive Appointments and Government Investigations Committee, and distinguished guests. For the record, my name is Jean Paul B. Rages, Acting Special Assistant for the Administration under the Office of the Governor. On behalf of Honorable Governor Arnold I. Palacios and the Honorable Lieutenant Governor David M. Apeteng, I thank you for the opportunity to appear before you. I am pleased to introduce Mr. Anthony I. Macaranas, who was nominated by the Governor and Lieutenant Governor to serve as Commissioner for the Department of Public Safety. Mr. Macaranas is a retired police Assistant Chief with over thirty-five years of experience in law enforcement. He has served with distinct honor and has contributed significantly within the Department of Public Safety, bringing positive change and progress in uplifting the standards and values for the safety of our community. His impressive resume showcases remarkable achievement and unwavering commitment to serving the Department of Public Safety and the CNMI in its entirety. His experience, credentials, and contributions to serving the Commonwealth makes him an outstanding candidate for this position. We are confident that he is well prepared to answer any questions you may have and present his visions for the future. Governor Palacios and Lieutenant Governor Apeteng have complete trust and confidence in Mr. Macaranas to serve as the next Commissioner for the Department of Public Safety. And for these reasons, Madam Chairwoman, I humbly request for your favorable consideration on behalf of our nominee. Thank you, Sisus Mosses and Gliso, for the opportunity to introduce him to this august body.
Thank you, Mr. Rages. I will now open the floor for public comments. For those of you who wish to make public comments, I ask that you keep your comments to five minutes. And please state your name and the entity you represent for the record. And if you have any written statements, I ask that you please provide it to our Sergeant-at-Arms so that it may be made a part of our records this morning. You may begin, sir.
For the record, my name is Deober Pua. I came here as a private citizen. Good morning, Madam Chair, Celina Babauta, and to this honorable august body. As a twenty-first cycle DPS Police Academy graduate, I was taught of my fundamental duty, which is to serve mankind, safeguard lives and property, protect the innocent against deception, the weak against oppression, intimidation, peaceful against violence, respect the constitutional rights of all men to liberty, equality, and justice. I put this code of ethics closer to my heart, mindful of the welfare of others, to be honest in my thoughts and deeds, both my personal and official life, to ensure I obey the laws of the land and the regulations and never to acrophisciously or permeate personal feelings, prejudice, animosities, or friendship to influence my decision without fear or favor, malice, ill, will. Chief Macaranas always emphasized throughout our academy days, breaking down the barriers, that the most significant power is to recognize the badge of our office as a symbol of public faith, integrity, and honesty, giving us the challenge to accept it as a public trust. To be held so long as we are true to the ethics of our police service, we must uphold our oath and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America and the laws of the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands and that we may faithfully discharge our duties of our office as peace officers to the best of our ability. Madam Chair and to this honorable august body, I am here to express my support for Anthony I. Macaranas as the next DPS Commissioner, not because he used to be my senior drill instructor or as a colleague, but because I have known Chief Macaranas during my time as a cadet in the Law Enforcement Explorer and also as a summer training radio dispatcher. Although Chief Macaranas may be known as the strictest police officer or matopang, but as an experienced retired police officer, our honorable Governor has found the right and quality leader who will restore public trust and confidence back to the force and into our community. We extend our sincere gratitude to his successor, who also played a major role in our police force. But with Chief Macaranas, he will do so much to ensure that all men and women in uniform abide by their conduct and responsibilities. The inner circle has come to an end. There is a new sheriff in town to ensure violation of laws, rules, and orders are properly enforced to safeguard our low-ranking files against intimidation from their superior. Conflicting orders are to be put to an end as well. With Chief Macaranas taking the helm, I encourage him to bring cooperation between ranks and units of the department so that there will be an establishment of a high spirit of cooperation within the department. I have confidence in his leadership that he will ensure that our police force protects the lives and property, preserve the peace, detect and arrest violators of the law, and assist a person in need. With this, I ask this honorable august body to please confirm the nomination of Chief Macaranas. Thank you and God bless.
Sisus Mosses, Senor Pua, the floor is still open for public comments.
Hello. Hafaday and Tirol, good morning, everyone, Madam Chair and members of your EAGI Committee. I submitted my letter of support earlier, I guess this month or last month, in support of the nominee. My name is Jose Simovnas. I'm here in my official capacity as a Director of the Division of Customs and Biosecurity. Let me just touch a little before I move on to the gist of my testimony. The Division of Customs, or CBS, is responsible to ensure that our borders are safe from any infiltration of dangerous goods, whether it's drugs, weapons, from entering our CNMI borders. We are also responsible to ensure that no agricultural prohibited items enter our borders. We are also responsible to ensure that invasive species does not enter our borders and so as counterfeit goods. And that's why it's crucial for me that we have partnerships to assist us in our responsibilities. When the Governor and Lieutenant Governor nominated Mr. Anthony Macaranas, AKA Big Mac, that's how the law enforcement community know him as Big Mac. You know, I'm so happy and grateful because I've known the nominee for a long time since he was, as Mr. Pua mentioned, the strictest, a strict cop, you know, a strict street cop. But when he was appointed earlier, you know, he visited my office and he was, you know, looking forward and trying to, because he understood, he knows that we had issues, we had a breakdown with all law enforcement. I'm not going to go into that detail. But he came by and, you know, offering his assistance, his commitment to work together with my division or with the division and with other law enforcement agencies. And Madam Chair, that's what we need. The law enforcement committee should work together and not oppose each other. Other starting in the law enforcement, you know, everybody has their own responsibilities, but we should work together. And that's what I need with the Division of CBS is to have partnerships, to work together, and not against another. I have witnessed his dedication to public service throughout his career at the Department of Public Safety. I am confident he is more than capable to take on the responsibilities of the Commission of the Department of Safety. It brings a wealth of experience, having served with distinction during his time at DPS. Mr. Macaranas' familiarity with the inner workings of DPS position him as an ideal candidate for the role of Commissioner. I am not going to doubt that. I kindly ask you and your committee to endorse Mr. Macaranas to the full Senate body to confirm him for Commission of the Department of Public Safety. I am confident that his appointment will lead to continued excellence in public safety and initiatives. But I'm Chair and members of your committee, thank you for your attention to this matter, and I trust that Mr. Macaranas' nomination will receive the consideration it deserves. And I'm ready and happy to, once he's confirmed, to, you know, let's get started with the plan, Commissioner, to have all law enforcement work together. Thank you very much.
Sisus Mosses, Senor Simovnas, the floor is still open for public comments.
Morning, sir.
Good morning. Buenos dias, Madam Chair, member of this committee. My name is Ramon Arbi Blas Camacho. Right now, I'm the mayor for this municipality. Madam Chair and member of this committee, I'm here to seek your utmost support, consideration, and favorable decision to confirm Anthony Macaranas. Anthony Macaranas, I'm a retired Assistant Chief of Police. I joined the police in nineteen eighty-two, graduated from the third cycle Police Academy. And if I'm not mistaken, Macaranas graduated in nineteen eighty-six. He's a little bit older than I. And I've known Officer Macaranas. When I get assigned to the police operation, Assistant Chief operation for the police division, Macaranas is under my command. And I always use him as my buffer zone in the police, especially in the traffic enforcement. At any time that there's a high rate of accidents in any road area, I dispatch him to monitor that road area. And he will finish five citation booklet, you know, for prevention. Macaranas is one of a professional law enforcement. His appearance, from head to toe, is a perfect role model to the other law enforcement. And he's a role model to the rest of the officers in the Department of Public Safety. He's a very quiet guy, tough guy, straight guy. And he works under my command, and I don't tolerate either, you know, wrongdoing from my law enforcement officers. So with this candidate, this nominee, Madam Chair and the committee, you're not going to regret for them to lead the Department of Public Safety. And I'm also looking forward, and I'm willing to volunteer to become an advisor under his department at any time that he needs my help. And I know there's another retired high-ranked law enforcement here. They're willing to support Macaranas and to help Macaranas in giving advice how to build up, you know, the law enforcement in our community. As the mayor in this municipality, I came across with so many issues in our community. Crime is rampant. I tried my best, took extra initiative by calling different religious leaders to talk about community issues, especially crime and other issues in our community. And the other also, I called the different ethnic community here on the island, you know, to share with them the community issue in our island. And now, today or tomorrow, I'll be meeting with Pishing Two, which is, I'm done with Pishing One Business Community. So I'm trying to gather all these community in the island. How can we work together? And by connecting with Commissioner Macaranas, we're going to be seeing a big difference in our community in dropping these high numbers of criminal activities within our community. As the mayor for this municipality, my top three priority here is to promote safe community, safe village, and a clean island. And again, I will assure you, committee, Madam Chair, that I will volunteer to give my professional advice, you know, how to build up our department. And also, I'm looking forward that Commissioner Macaranas and Director of Customs and other law enforcement to create this law enforcement community roundtable discussion so we can all partner up and to eliminate this unacceptable activity within our community. And again, with respect, Madam Chair and committee, I humbly ask that please confirm Anthony Macaranas. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Camacho. Before the next speaker begins, I would like to acknowledge the presence of our former speaker and vice-speaker, boss Jonathan Atto, and the current Chair of Snauw Ways and Means, and also Representative Manny Castro is joining us today in the chamber. You may proceed, sir.
Sisus Mosses, Buenos dias, Madam Chair. Zan mananas isainan afan mananana dia. Rebendision para Hamzuloki turunemi distinguuis nuwa membro paresti senador na chamber. Talua i para umari kota inano si Steve Kemes mun. Agi papa alo ambelan i departamentoni wafi zan inazu danin hemlo para inira di publikuta. So anti debit tutun nuwa zawak na bai alaba dididina hungan i sainah dan simona paronaid nu azudu zan taza sijat esangan nu i kwalificaunya si Mr. Macaranas nuwa mampus nu takvena zan nu ilia buntis tagi puestuni hafa gagegi aligramentuni ginagogo ginagomi zu. Pos nu tibeyan na naku nu be fongogo unlong kululu nasupotashon para i map intrega watu ginigi departamentoni pulisia. Ginini unirabli i guvenota asa Governor Palacios zan nitena Governor nu Apeteng na i hajunta na para unaguaha isti inatan zo ginilui i departamentoni pulisia. Pos talua nu Madam Chair para Hamzul u gaogo unlong kululu nasupotashon mi zu. Kosinya in intrega sti halungi full bodygi next nezumi zu committee na hungan gamagaizu nu sumapuputa i nomination para si Mr. Macaranas pesamentigi pesunana manera zan loki gi departamentoni gumagaizu. Unungu kasia mister nuwa mafnasgi earlier hungan guaha man masusese di pagogi mafananani para tafan agatsungi. Tafan hita man mataatsung zatafan partnership nu masusese di esteno pagogi departamentoni momi zan i pulisia zan i custom. I loki guaha gi pagugu na para masusede loki meeting momi gi taluani. Za inigi napwestu tanisisita ginigi lukata ipatafana azuda. Za gi lu eno u gaogo Hamzul na put fa bod nu iksi sa i direction mi zu za inatan zan azuda i nominee ni mananai Hamzul gi minan mi zu. Za gi lu eno Sisus Mosses, Madam Chair, na yonai nesina putiniran. Zan gi lu eno be naya loki para be intrega Hamzul utungan asinya bunti was tagi official amo matu esti na official na komunikasyon lo pudi mafaisi no loki ginini departamentoni pulisia gininluta kosinya man asiguru na matu zan mahungu esti loki na man intrega i supotashon niya para si Mr. Macaranas za bina official ta esti na guaha ginino un oas papit nu gogoti zapa be intrega asa official communication loki. Bunti gai gesteno gi official gi zomo nu komunikasyon lo bina siguru na man adublinan na hungan marisibi no claro zan manota namangai gilo kenosiana indivizuat na pulisia gininluta nu sumapuputa i dota former chief zan pagu para i dota nuwa full fledps DPS Commissioner. Pos gi lu eno Sisus Mosses, Madam Chair, members of this committee, and to all of you guys, dongkula Sisus Mosses zan buenas dias.
Sisus Mosses, Senor Messing, and former senator. The floor is still open for public comments.
Good morning, Hafaday and Tirol, Madam Chair Babauta, and members of this community. My name is Zerlin Taimanyao, and I am the Criminal Justice Program Coordinator at the Northern Mariana's College. I, along with the President of the Northern Mariana's College, Dr. Galvin DeLeon Guerrero, and our Interim Dean of Academic Programs and Services, Ms. Lorraine Cabrera Maui, are here in support of the confirmation of Mr. Anthony Macaranas as Commissioner for the Department of Public Safety. In our ever-evolving society, safety and security are paramount concerns that require steadfast leadership, unwavering dedication, and a deep-rooted commitment to serving the public. Mr. Macaranas Mr. Macaranas embodies these qualities and more, making him the ideal candidate to lead the Department of Public Safety into the future. First and foremost, Mr. Macaranas brings a wealth of experience to the table. Having retired as Assistant Chief of Police in 2022 after an exemplary 35-year tenure within the department, he has dedicated his life to the service of our community. His journey from the grassroots of law enforcement to the upper ranks of leadership speaks volumes about his dedication, expertise, and unwavering commitment to public safety. Furthermore, Mr. Macaranas is not just a leader within the department, he is a respected figure in our community, a true legacy. He is known for his integrity, fairness, and commitment to upholding the law regardless of rank or status. In fact, Mr. Macaranas holds the unique distinction of being the first, and perhaps the only, police officer to pull over a governor and issue a ticket for speeding. This act of integrity and impartiality is a testament to Mr. Macaranas's unwavering commitment to serving the public good. Mr. Macaranas' vision for the future of public safety is both innovative and inclusive. He understands that ensuring the safety of our citizens requires a multifaceted approach that goes beyond traditional law enforcement tactics. From implementing community policing initiatives to fostering partnerships with local organizations and stakeholders, Mr. Macaranas is committed to building trust and collaboration within our communities. He recognizes the importance of addressing root causes of crime and is dedicated to implementing holistic solutions that address the underlying issues in our community. In addition, Mr. Macaranas is not content with just the status quo. He is driven by a desire to improve and innovate. He recognizes the importance of having a highly educated and well-trained workforce within the department. To this end, he has already taken proactive steps to reestablish collaboration with the Northern Marianas College, aiming to provide enhanced educational and training opportunities for DPS personnel. By investing in a professional development of his team, Mr. Macaranas is ensuring that they are equipped with knowledge and the skills needed to meet the evolving challenges of public safety. Mr. Macaranas has also reestablished partnerships with various federal law enforcement agencies, enhancing coordination and information sharing to better combat crime and protect our communities. He has forged a partnership with the public school system to ensure continued safety of our children, implementing measures to address safety concerns and promote a secure learning environment. Mr. Macaranas' leadership style is characterized by transparency, accountability, and integrity. He believes in fostering an organizational culture that prioritizes ethical conduct, fairness, and respect for all individuals. Under his leadership, I am confident that the Department of Public Safety will operate with the highest standards of professionalism and ethics, earning the trust and confidence of the community it serves. In conclusion, Mr. Macaranas is not just a capable leader, he is a dedicated public servant with a passion for making our communities safer and stronger. His experience, vision, and integrity make him the perfect choice to lead the Department of Public Safety into a new era of excellence. Someone once said that "Success is not measured by the position once one has reached in life, but by the obstacles one has overcome while trying to succeed." This quote highlights Mr. Macaranas' resilience, perseverance, and commitment to excellence, showcasing his ability to overcome the challenges and lead with determination and purpose. Once again, I, along with the President of the Northern Marianas College, Dr. Galvin DeLeon Guerrero, Interim Dean of Academic Programs and Services, Lorraine Cabrera Maui, and our community camp, our campus community, support Mr. Macaranas' confirmation as the Commissioner for the Department of Public Safety. With him at the helm of our community, at the Department, our communities will be safe and in capable hands. Thank you, Sidoos Maasi and Gilisaw.
Thank you, Zan Sidoos Maasi, loki, Ms. Taimanyao. The floor is still open.
Good morning, Zan Tito. Madam Chair, Babauta, Members of this esteemed Senate Body of the 23rd Northern Marianas Commonwealth Legislature. Ladies and gentlemen, and honored guests, my name is Anthony Torres. As Commissioner of the Northern Mariana Islands Department of Corrections, I am honored to address you today in full support of the confirmation of Anthony I. Macaranas as a Commissioner of the Department of Public Safety. In my many years of service in the field of criminal justice, I have had the privilege of working closely with Commissioner Macaranas for a short period of time, when I brought him on board to become my Deputy Commissioner, witnessing firsthand his exemplary leadership skills and dedicated commitment to public safety. We would have long talks about leadership and the problems we are encountering in our department and in the community, and the solutions we have to address them. I knew then and there our visions were aligned. When he received the call to become the Acting Commissioner, it was not bittersweet, it was providential and a calling for a collaboration and a great partnership, our Commonwealth will witness, between all law enforcement agencies moving forward. I reframed it as if we are now becoming each other's deputies. Two tons are better than one. Commissioner Macaranas is a visionary leader who brings a wealth of experience, expertise, and compassion to his role. His dedication to implementing evidence-based practices, fostering community partnerships like community policing, and advocating for the rights and well-being of individuals underlines his commitment to the principles of justice and equality. Throughout his career, beginning as a young police officer to his retirement as an Assistant Chief, and his service to our country in the military, thank you for your service, Ton. Anthony was indeed a household name in our community, like many others I've just said. I mean, this man sitting right here next to me is a living legend. I'm sure many people in this room have a story about their memories of him. I mean, I remember when I was a young teenager driving around, I would tell myself, "Just don't get pulled over by Big Matt, and you'll be all good." He was known to be fair, firm, and consistent, who loved his job wholeheartedly. He demonstrated the attitudes of caring and responsibility daily. Throughout his tenure, Commissioner Macaranas has spearheaded numerous initiatives that have led tangible improvements in public safety, crime prevention, and rehabilitation efforts. His innovative approach to problem-solving, coupled with his deep-rooted empathy and understanding of the complex issues facing our communities, sets him apart as a transformative leader in the realm of public safety. I've had the privilege of collaborating with Commissioner Macaranas on several occasions, and each time I have been struck by his strategic vision, his willingness to listen and learn from others, his caring attitude, his humility, and his genuine dedication in making our communities safer and more resilient. In conclusion, I firmly believe that Anthony I. Macaranas is the right person to lead the Department of Public Safety into the future. His proven track record of success, his steadfast commitment to public service, and his visionary leadership make him an invaluable asset to our Commonwealth. I urge you to confirm his appointment without hesitation, for the benefit of all those who rely on the Department of Public Safety to protect and serve our communities. Ton, know that with power comes great responsibility. Know that power can corrupt. Continue to put God at the center of everything and join me in being a righteous leader. Be the change you want to see in the community. Our people need it more than ever before. Na yonamu sankata na istas Marianas. Dangkula Sidoos Maasi, Gilisaw, Madam, Salamapo, and thank you, everyone.
Sidoos Maasi, Senor Torres. The floor is still open for public comments.
Zan Tiro. To you, Madam Chair, Selena Babauta, Senator Paul Manglonia, Senator Karina Magovnia, and Senator Donald Manglonia. My name is Lino Sablantinorio, and I am a retired law enforcement officer. I started my career at the Department of Public Safety from 1980 up until 1998, when I decided to retire from the Department of Public Safety as the Deputy Commissioner of Operations. Several years later, I came back into office again and served as the first-ever Commissioner for Department of Corrections from 2006 to 2009. I am here this morning to express my enthusiastic support for the nomination of Mr. Anthony I. Macaranas to the position of Commissioner of Public Safety for the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands. I have had the privilege of knowing Mr. Macaranas for many years, dating back to his time in high school in the late 70s to the mid 1980s, when he first expressed his interest in a career in the law enforcement field. Throughout the years, I have observed Mr. Macaranas demonstrate unwavering commitment, integrity, and fairness in all aspects of his life and work. His dedication to public service and his outstanding character makes him an exemplary candidate for the role as the Commissioner of the Department of Public Safety. Please allow me to provide a brief account of Mr. Macaranas' illustrious career. I first encountered Anthony Macaranas during his high school years when he was a member of the Law Enforcement Explorer Program. Since then, he has embarked on a distinguished journey within the Department of Public Safety, beginning as a patrolman in 1980s, progressing through the ranks to Police Officer Two, Police Officer Three, Police Sergeant, Police Lieutenant, Police Captain, and finally as Police and as Assistant Chief before his separation from Department of Public Safety. During his tenure with DPS, Mr. Macaranas exhibited exceptional professionalism, punctuality, and dedication to duty. He consistently displayed high levels of motivation and dedication in all assignments, whether in patrol, traffic enforcement, DUI enforcement, or as a motorcycle officer. His commitment extended beyond the realm of law enforcement, as he actively participated in community outreach programs, educating individuals in all ages about the role of law enforcement in our society, fostering positive relationships between the police and the community. Throughout Anthony's distinguished career, spanning of over 30 years, Mr. Macaranas conducted himself with the utmost professionalism and integrity, earning the respect and admiration of his colleagues, superiors, and the community at large. Notably, he has maintained an impeccable record, absent of any wrongdoing or misconduct. In conclusion, I wholeheartedly endorse Mr. Anthony I. Macaranas for the position he is being considered for. His exemplary track record, outstanding character, and unwavering dedication to public service makes him an exceptional candidate who is highly deserving of this opportunity. Thank you for considering my input in this matter, and I trust that Mr. Macaranas will serve with distinction and honor if confirmed to the position. Sidoos Maasi, thank you, Zan Gilisaw.
Sidoos Maasi, Senor Tinorio. The floor is still open for public comments.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Senators, your team. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of Anthony Macaranas, our soon-to-be Commissioner for the Department of Public Safety. I am Ed Probst. I am here in my personal capacity as a friend and as a huge supporter of Mr. Macaranas, someone who I have known for many decades, although he is older than me a little bit. But, you know, there's a lot that can be said about it. His credentials are incredible, and his accomplishments. He, of course, served DPS and retired after 35 years, quite an extensive and brilliant career, and he has pages of accolades. And I can't go through all of them because it'd be too long, and I know we're going to try to keep this brief, but just on his trainings alone, he's, it includes a police sniper course at the Government Training Institute in Boise, Idaho, explosive breaching for law enforcement tactical operations, prevention and response to suicide bombing incidents, as well as the incident response to terrorist bombings, training at New Mexico Tech, the Department of Homeland Security Basic SWAT School, the Federal Bureau of Investigation Explosive Unit post-blast workshops, and the Unexploded Ordnance Technician Training Course, just to name a few. We also applaud and appreciate Mr. Macaranas, who was enlisted in the United States Army. He proudly served under the Echo Company, 100th Battalion, for 42nd Infantry, and attended the US Army Infantry School in Fort Benning, Georgia in October 1999 through March 2000. He was deployed to Iraq in support of Operations Iraqi Freedom III from August 2004 through January 2006. There, like I said, are pages of accolades and could be here for a long time, but I wanted to speak about this gentleman here who really cares about the community. And I gotta admit, it is so impressive that as a retiree, you could just be basking at the beach right now and enjoying life, but he recognizes and feels the, and is compelled to serve our community pro bono. How do you do that? It doesn't get better than that. But it is that willingness to serve and help this department that desperately needs help because of many, many challenges that it has faced, not just today, but for many years. I cannot think of anybody better, more fit for this position, somebody that we've all admired. And yes, when we were kids, we always feared of getting pulled over by Officer Macaranas because there's no free getting off a ticket. You're speeding, you're going to get a ticket. But that's the kind of officers that we need, that whether you're my primo or cousin or whatever, you were speeding, you broke the law, you know, and you're going to have to pay for it. We appreciate that, that dedication, that loyalty to his and his commitment to public service. I'm very proud to be here today and to support this very brilliant, hardworking, and caring leader, and I support him 100%. I look forward to his confirmation and to working with you on some of the ideas we've already discussed. I'm very excited. I'm not going to let them out now, we'll release them later, but he has come already, even in his acting capacity, to bring up some brilliant ideas, and he's getting, he will get full support, I'm sure, from the House and hopefully from the Senate as well. Thank you again for this opportunity. Thank you, Commissioner Macaranas. God bless you and your family, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Probst. The floor is still open.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Committee Members. My name is Juan Apua, Commissioner of Public, Commissioner of Fire and Emergency Medical Services. I'm here in full support of Anthony Macaranas' nomination for Commissioner for the Department of, Department of Public Safety. Mr. Macaranas started his career as a police officer one and progressively climbed up the rank as the Assistant Police Chief. I've had the pleasure of working with him over a decade while I was the Fire Crew Supervisor in the Department of Fire and EMS, till his retirement. Mr. Macaranas is a very dedicated professional individual who is passionate about his chosen career profession as a senior police officer, serving DPS. He's all about helping the community to his best of his ability. I have observed his ability to work with external stakeholders with an approachable personality, professional aptitude, and genuine care and respect he has for his organization. I believe Mr. Macaranas will uphold the duties and responsibilities of the Department of Public Safety to its highest standards. He is an asset to the Commonwealth of the Northern Marianas Island. I am confident that he would be an excellent choice for Commissioner for the Department of Public Safety for the Commonwealth of the Northern Marianas Island. He will bring the skills, experience, integrity, and leadership that is required for a position of such importance to our community. I fully support the nomination of Mr. Macaranas as the Commissioner of Public, Public Safety, and request for his confirmation as a whole from the members. as a whole from the members. Jesus Masi.
Jesus Masi, Commissioner Puah. The floor is still open for public comments.
Buenos dias, Madam Chair, Senadora Selena Babauta, Manu Robli, the Senator, and Senator Corina Magovnia, Senator Paul Manglonia, and Donald Manglonia. Guahu, si Joseph Mundo Castro, aka OC, Tautau Aslitu Saipan, intermenti Mariana Islands. Como ritirozo, zaututun lokinila la polisya ginnin Police Officer 1. Zawatanulu taimanai natatano ne mang taputsau tai gini masusidigi estida persona as Acting Commissioner Anthony Macaranas. Ah, aatanulu iladera ya bonsagi parau oddi eskalera gitie libiano na nilala inila la polisya. Para fampos na bipatsaput kualidad sa esta manota todo i manmofana na mangwekuintus jan kun todo binti i inatanmizu inseda na kualidad si Acting Commissioner Macaranas. Ya, si Jesus Masi para i magaloi as Ornu Palosius jan i litanan governor David Apatang ni magonzi si Acting Commissioner Macaranas. Si Acting Commissioner Macaranas jan i litanan za afaksaizanahunguk na gaigiju saipan huri upiro toti ogangu sa asumulusugi roritiroh lekusoga ha gwenno sa mululusuhau saga jan sedbi ipubliku sa polisya galuni deputamentu manisissita judumo kumu unuhau na seniot ad manou genno pos sedbi ipubliku. Pos sa ekunguku jan e mapromotalu paree kapitan jan i Assistant Chief parewa na rasun oogangu atutumapadeshet guahu sumanganigi na sagaji zauju de publiku. Pos magofu sa ekunguku ana ma notisena para masimora ginni na pisun legislaturaisan iluna gu ma kunshutazu kousina motuzu mogi za bei sonu manoi minsohi pa bei atana ko maulik i karironya moona. Kof magofu sa usoda na isaina noizu tempo jan abindisizu ya saguahu pa behono mogi za bei saputa ben saputas si Acting Commissioner za ulara za hamzune manmandisissidi gi pangu i hofapanrekomenda inrekomenda gi ginasgas jan sonu na rekomendation taimanai pa besa onyamzu na guahu usesin fasin hamzoo za infasin lokui i mangga chungmizu ginni na pisu za umasaputa manusinya si Acting Commissioner para gui za komisioner gi manmamailana dia. Lo unua lokki debi no umitgut si Acting Commissioner parau arregla i hofashe uhungu galuni deputent polisya ginni ni sampapa hulu jan hulu papa gi bandan discipline. I polisya debi no ufanfutmod gi uniformnia. Debina ginni ni sapatus ista hulu gitie unsa hamzoo ginni monanai sia solapi parau ufan maulik manma atania de publiku. Jan gin tinuli polisya na tenasetitbityongnia analolostima isalapeu ne innanai deputamentu ma sia unsen debi no ma atanizu na uva fanfutmalidad. Uma princei junia uniform oma pali sapatusnia jan sin turunnia za ufanfutmod moona. Jan gin manmalagu ufan manoi sheddu which is gua lokki uga gaga non dia ufan manoi sheddu ma si polisya jan i tautau sia gi aluni deputamentu polisya isivilan employees frontline enusia lokki ufan mahaxasudunnia ulara mon gi manmamailana tempo and jan gin kazada i problema ni tapafana pangu na tempo. Sina manmamalayamzu lo un tem na i tempo na pa sia quatro anos na tempo edigi no fanmahaxasudu. Ande gi udisessia. Za Acting Commissioner, congratulations ya chogui chi chomu gi taimanai gi manmalofansia na tempo yuncho chogui. Pos estia dokulu na si Jesus Masi para todo samzoo jan hamzoo lokki e publiku ne manggaigigi ginni. Talu, si Jesus Masi.
Jesus Masi, Retired DPS Commissioner Jose Castro. The floor is still open for public comments.
Good morning. I have a little bit of a sore throat, so please excuse me. But my name is James De Longuero. I am a former Department of Public Safety Commissioner, and I'm currently working as a Special Assistant under Director Mafnas at the Division of Customs and Biosecurity. I am here this morning to first and foremost support the nomination of Mr. Anthony Iglesias Macaranas as the next Commissioner of the Department of Public Safety. There's been a lot of positive things said about the nominee, and I've heard everybody come up here. And it's pretty hard to find new things about or rather find things that are negative about the nominee. There's really no good reason to oppose the nomination of Mr. Anthony Iglesias Macaranas. And I speak in terms of I'm sorry. And I speak in the sense that I have spent over 25 years in the Department of Public Safety. I've known Mr. Macaranas for that long. He has been the face of the Department of Public Safety. There is no other more well-known police officer in the entire Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands or my generation than Mr. Macaranas. We knew him then as Sergeant Mac because he spent a long time there in that profession. And everybody knows him, but they know him for good reasons. It's not really for anything negative. And right now, as it stands, I think that, and this is my personal opinion, there is no other police officer really that deserves currently, no other police officer deserves it more to be appointed as Commissioner as this current nominee. And he's doing it pro bono as Congressman Probst had indicated. But I won't go too much into that detail. I'll try to keep my testimony here short and concise and to the point. More importantly, though, ladies and gentlemen, is that the Department of Public Safety, particular police officers and customs officers, those are the two oldest professions in law enforcement in the Commonwealth today and has been historically. A customs was created through Section 603 of the Covenant when the US did not extend the customs territory of the United States towards the cinema. And of course, when the cross-territory ended, the Department of Public Safety become the law enforcement agency in the entire cinema. We were charged with protecting the borders, and the police was in charge of protecting the streets. So it is absolutely critical that the two, these two agencies work closely together. And in the short time that Chief Macaranas has been appointed as Acting Commissioner, we have done extensive work in terms of collaboration, looking at the key problems as it relates to professional development. And I've also enlisted the help of the Criminal Justice Program and the Community Development Institute of the Northern Mariana College to help us better better create programs that are not just tailored to our current environments, but also, more importantly, to see how we can begin to develop training programs that will eventually lead us to meeting the national peace officer standards and training. There's a lot of interaction. There's a lot of work. And as some of the other department heads that indicated in their testimonies here, we're talking. That's very important, communication. The communication is there. We're now collaborating. We have a law enforcement summit thanks to Commissioner Macaranas' leadership here that we're planning for sometime next month so that we can bring all of the different heads of the entire, not just law enforcement community, but public safety community. Okay, we're including fire and homeland security as well in the process. And even those agencies that are aspiring to have law enforcement authority, we're beginning to bring them together so we can begin to discuss not just projects of common interest, but also how do we adopt a set of standards that meet the national standards, by the way, when it comes to providing adequate training for law enforcement? This is important for us financially, but it's also important for us to ensure that, for example, should any of our workforce relocate to other law enforcement agencies, we don't have to keep repeating the same cycles of or different cycles of training. So key fundamental standards is one area. There's also leveraging when it comes to resources, equipment, and deployment of personnel. So all of these things have all been started to begin to take fruition when Mr. Macaranas here was appointed Commissioner. So I'm here today to ask for one thing. Please recommend his nomination before the confirmation before the full Senate body. It is very important that we have a sitting permanent commissioner at DPS. It is a, I don't think there's any dispute that is one of the most critical agencies here in the cinema. So if we don't have a sitting permanent commissioner at DPS, I just don't see how we can move forward with the Department of Public Safety not, still not having stable leadership. So having said that, I want to thank this committee for the opportunity to speak, and I want to congratulate I think Commissioner Macaranas on his appointment as the next permanent commissioner of the Department of Public Safety. Jesus Masi.
Jesus Masi, Senior De Longuero. The floor is still open.
Buenos dias. Hopades antero, Senators, Madam Chairwoman. My name is Brad Rosala, and I've come here today to, in my personal capacity, to express my support for the confirmation of Anthony Macaranas as our community's next Commissioner of Department of Public Safety. And it feels good just to say that. It feels good to see the good guys win. And Acting Commissioner Macaranas is indeed one of our good guys. In his 35-year career with DPS, he's made a pretty big name for himself, as you've heard. And a lot of people describe him with words like confident, fair, capable, honorable, respectful, and respectable. The luckiest among us get to describe him by another word: friend. Acting Commissioner Macaranas does things professionally. He doesn't play favorites. He doesn't hesitate to do what's necessary. He just assesses every situation and does what needs to be done. And while his years of experience and training prepared him to react to just about any situation, he doesn't rush to judgment. And he appreciates the importance of being proactive, being open to the community, listening to our issues and listening to our problems. And while he's a good listener with a good heart, he remains steadfast to his duty and to the laws he swore to uphold. He doesn't compromise his integrity for the benefit of his friends, family, or his personal advancement. And by now, you've heard how he's sticked it friends and family and even a sitting governor. And he didn't compromise his integrity then, and he demonstrated his resolve to help our community when he unretired, gave up retired life, and came to renew his commitment to our community again. This is the kind of leader that we need and the kind of leader our law enforcement officers deserve. He's already served our community for 35 years, and I guess that wasn't enough for him. But really, it wasn't enough for our community either. Thanks for coming back. Thanks for coming back. Your community missed you and your friends did too. See you soon, Gilisal.
Jesus Massey, Senor Rosala. The floor is still open for public comments.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of this esteemed body. My name is Police Sergeant Fred Sato with the Department of Public Safety. I'm here as an official in my official capacity. I'm currently the Public Information Officer with the department. I'm here to extend my support for the nominee. I've had the opportunity to work closely with him for the past month, two months, January? But anyways, shows how much I keep track of our dates, but many in the community would ask, how is it with the Acting Commissioner? And I've had this discussion with him that there are several factors now that he's looking at. It's the community, the department and the politics. And why I say politics is because as the head of the department, serving under the pleasure of the governor, outside influenced decisions or any requests can affect how you run your department and I've seen it. Am I to say that he's going to abide by what decisions are being influenced from outside? No, I believe with his reputation of being a straight shooter, firm and having the highest integrity in how he conducts himself, he's fit for the position. Many would ask, well, what are your opinions? And I tell them, it's one thing to be able to do the job, it's one thing to supervise a small unit. It's a whole different ballgame now because you're leading an entire department. And that's the challenge he's going to face is the different personalities, the administrative stuff with the entire department. And I see it, the department right now is facing several challenges and with the Acting Commissioner's position of, you know, we can't dwell on what has occurred in the past and we got to move forward and find solutions to bring us, bringing the department back into that role of having the trust from our community and also having that solid foundation that our officers are ready to go out and serve. Another challenge that I believe that our Acting Commissioner, the nominee we'll be facing, is a common one was is our officer retention. Many officers, you know, we're in this generation now that officers want to be paid. They want to be paid for the work that they do. And we are no longer in my time where I came in the late 90s where what you were making was, it was 18,000 per annum and stuff was okay. With this generation of officers we're coming with is, you know, some are getting educated and coming back and and they want to be compensated for what they're worth. And I feel the pain when I know that an officer who is going on seven, eight years as a police officer one is making less than what this body makes in every four years, it's sad. 29, 27 to 29,000 for a police officer one. It doesn't make sense with the amount of stress, the workload that we get, it doesn't balance out. And this is the issue with our officer retention is they go and they seek greener pastures because the pay scale is better, the pay level is better than what they make here with their department. And the Acting Commissioner is aware that, that we need to find ways to retain our good officers, our resources. It seems like DPS through my, through my time in DPS and being a very observant officer, it seems like we're the Walmart of the government. The agencies, when they need vehicles, fleets, resources, it seems like DPS becomes the Walmart. And then when our department hits a bump, it's difficult to get the assistance from the other agencies. And I'm sorry to say, but it just, we have to be honest that DPS has long been under budget. And the word defund the police, I believe DPS has been defunded since the late 90s. We never seem to get the big support that, you know, I even told the Acting Commissioner, and this is no offense to anybody, I don't see the purpose of providing a centric report. Because when we provide that centric report, it states our challenges and our positives. It seems the challenges outweigh the positives and nothing is being done to provide that additional support. And with the nominee, I believe that he will stand his ground, stand his foot, lead us from the front, not from the side, not from the rear, and ensure that his department is first and not second. And then I hope that with his command staff in place, he will also have that support and that guidance that his vision is what we follow and it's for the benefit of our community, but also the personnel, the uniform officers, our civilians in the department. Thank you, Madam Chair and Members.
Thank you, Mr. Sato. The floor is still open for public comments.
Good morning, Madam Chair, than the member of this team here. No, in a onusi one, Taisakan de la Cruz, the Post Police Chief, Guinea CPA. Gai kizu gini na ogan, especially mentis para be na fanunguamzo na uso popota ina pontonya i gubet nutas no Governor Arnold Palacios gas, Acting Commissioner Anthony Macaronas. Ilaleku na estata hunguka todu i mantistigo, gilatav tavsiana no no persona kumuta oluk i kwalifica i kwalificisionya dan ekspresionya si Acting Commissioner. Zabwa o unu siniya besangan na tori du siya i manma nota papa. Ilaleku na talza mos para ta oluko para ta chalan sedzu na klasen ekspriyansa. Trenta onus pat mos ekspresionya i Acting Commissioner i DPS iteni ngou. Za ilaleku na ginin enou kwalifikau si Acting Commissioner ni para tanoi, nesina puesto i para o permanent commissioner ni public safety. Utaagi matotso maga dyan si Acting Commissioner at gino non tempo, gi task force za footman na persona matotso, manhongi ani manhula gilai i hafa ginagago para otso gitse etzuk kumuta oluk, etzuk pulisia. Zauna be share uno na ekspriyansa giza hamzo. Umbyayi ni manahami gi task force da guaha nu mission, we had a mission. Umohonom gi chalan, kalang dik senorio ta oluk si Acting Commissioner. Ipero ata na i karita gi chalan siniya sinangonya na kalang guaha violation of law. Watan, lekuma gahit na atungut etzonya, atungut etzonya estia i, i atungou. Usi ginin enou, no ginin enou na mensahii o fava isina mzo. Ilaleku na kunuspetu, footmuli dot esti para ta choogri esti i hearing. Lo ilaleku na kousinya, takunsudera za takunfima si Acting Commissioner za utuun tumu ogi etzuk i hafa ginagago i department pulisia. Parewa estata hungu bulha challenges, lekuda msa chukamono enou wa atuna department pulisia. Ifinenina ma atan inila cin i pulisia, lo tima atan i hafa na likraminto gima gwaig guaha nu kuip. Usi ginin endo Madam Chair, dani member of this na committeea. Jesus Massey, podina yam ginina tempo para no guaha dididik no ta oluk mensahii ni para ta kunfima esti Acting Commissioner as Anthony Macaronas. Jesus Massey.
Jesus Massey, Senor De La Cruz. The floor is still open for public comments.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Committee. My name is Captain Eloy Caipat Fiteo. I've been a police officer for more than 30 years as your nominee, Ton Macaronas. He's my bestest of friends, I just call him Ton. And I'm just going to make it very short. Department of Public Safety is in very rough waters right now. We are desperate. We are in need of positive changes to overcome these challenges, the rough waters that we are facing. But Ton, with his selflessness, compassion, he jumped on the ship. Pro bono, who would do such thing? Who would undergo such sacrifice? So I'm asking this honorable body, Madam Chair, and I'm asking the whole, the entire administration, with your support in supporting my future commissioner, we will be able to find clear and calm waters. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair, Committee.
Thank you, Captain Fiteo. The floor is still open for public comments.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Committee. I'm Captain Juan Mindiola from Department of Public Safety, currently now in Internal Affairs. 32 years in the department. When I first came in, I met with Acting Commissioner Macaronas here. All my times and years in the department, I look up to him. He showed me the way, no shortcuts. He guided me out about police works. And we always talk about, you know, helping the junior officers. As I continue to go, climb up the rank, I stopped on Police Officer 3 for 16 years. And this is the Acting Commissioner that, for Police Officer 3 for 16 years, I still love my work because of his guidance. It's almost like there's no hope, but because of him, he made me love my work. And then doing sergeant's capacity, lieutenant's capacity, almost like captain doing that job with that low ranking, I didn't complain. And then one time he told me that he's going to retire because maybe there's a problem in the department. I kind of like just mellow out, but when I heard that he's coming back, that's when I continued to lift my chest up because I know who's coming for a good leader. He put a good name, good reputation. Everybody mentioned about his qualities, qualification. And also Commissioner of Correction, it is true, he is a legend. For 35 years, he put a good name. I'm already 32 years, but I still want to go on. What I admire him, he retired. He should have like go spend time with the family, travel around the world, but he heard that there's need, help, that we need a leader as a commissioner. We have other supervisors at the Department of Public Safety, still working like me, but he decided, you know, gave up his good life to enjoy retirement, but he decided to continue to serve. So we're, he's a public servant, no doubts about that. What makes me really admire him, you all see that he came back because of his heart. If you have the heart to be a police officer or anything you do, even here, you will love to stay and continue to do this kind of work. So I admire him because of his heart and no doubt about that. I ask if you can appoint him because it's coming from his heart, not from his mind. I thank you. Please support him.
Thank you, Captain Mindiola. The floor is still open.
Morning, Madam Chair, buddy. My name is Jose Saros, I'm Assistant Chief of Police. And for 50 years, I've lived on this island, I'm a resident here. I have the privilege to work with Acting Commissioner Anthony Macaronas for quite a long time and that's over 30-plus years. I think Commissioner Anthony Macaronas is not just someone I happen to just know. We attended and graduated from the same high school, Maranas High School, loud and proud. If I could share some of my experiences with him, I would say Acting Commissioner's passion then and now is still the same, still alive. His characteristics such as behavior, attitude and straightforwardness are still the same. Acting Commissioner is the kind of person who does his work with dignity and honesty. People often talk about Macaronas, friends, family members and coworkers even echo about meeting Macaronas on the road saying, "Ay, adi, mungana man magatsam, gis Macaronas ama po." You know? Do people say this because they're scared or is it because they see him doing his job with integrity? I will say this, Macaronas is out there working very hard, not only to enforce the law, but to make sure that our motorists, our people are safe on the road. Acting Commissioner Anthony is one of the strictest supervisors on the force. If there is any officer who does not wear their uniform correctly, no shine their shoes, no use their equipment properly, he would stop them right there and counsel them. There's no need for later. I catch you now, I'll deal with you now. I would, I can share numerous stories about him, but I would end up writing a book about him. I'm glad, happy and that he decided to come back and serve our community because not only does he possess the knowledge and experience, but our department needs someone who has gone through the thick and thin with us, suffer what we have suffered and also understand our needs and what we lack. With this said, I am in full support for Acting Commissioner Anthony Macaronas and I ask this esteemed body to please expedite his appointment so we can move forward with addressing priorities that impact our Department of Public Safety and essentially our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Chief Saros. The floor is still open for public comments.
Morning, Madam Chair, Members. I'm here in my official capacity as a police officer with the Department of Public Safety. Foremost, my name is Michael R. Langdon. I have been a police officer since 1998. I left the department for another spat of career in the state of Washington where I retired as a law enforcement officer and headed back here. Upon my return, I learned that Chief Macaronas was still working for the department where I then was rehired and I am still, even though retired, learning from the best. He not only stands for service beyond, but humility and integrity. So I have not been able to present anything in writing, but what can you say about Acting Commissioner Macaronas? He is DPS. There's nothing short of that. No question. I am here to endorse him fully and request your full support for his confirmation as the Commissioner of the Department of Public Safety. But I am also here as his friend. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Officer Langdon. The floor is still open for public comments. If there are no further individuals who wish to make public comments, we will now move on with the agenda for today. For the record, the committee did not receive any letters in opposition of the nomination of Mr. Macaronas and he, and the committee has received letters of support from the following individuals. Mr. Wally Villagomez, DPS Police Sergeant. Mr. Sean P. T. White, member of our community from Precinct 1. Mr. Jose C. Moffness, Director, Division of Customs and Biosecurity. Mr. James C. De La Guerrero. Ms. Georgia M. Cabara, in her personal capacity. Mr. Juan A. Puwa, Commissioner Defense. Mr. Edward C. Maritita Jr., Resident Department Head for DPS in the municipality of Rota. Mr. Aniseto Ogumoro, DPS Director of Police. Mr. Jose P. Saros, Assistant Chief, Department of Public Safety. Dr. Galvin S. De La Guerrero, President, Northern Maranas College. And the letters submitted by former Senator Steve K. Mesken are from the following individuals. Noel M. Calvo, Perry K. Mesken, Shaw de la Cruz, Taisakan, Joseph T. Barcenas II. Manuel B. Castro Jr., the third. January A. Santos, Edward M. Hokuk Jr. Chevy C. Saniklas, Ervin C. Tai Maniao, Gary H. Tovis, Ms. Thiora A. Manglonya. On February twenty-third, thirteen, twenty twenty-four, Governor Arnold Palacios nominated Anthony Iglesias Macarons to serve as Commissioner of the Department of Public Safety pursuant to Article Three, Section fourteen of the NMI Constitution and Title One, Division Two, Section twenty-five oh two of the Commonwealth Code. The Department of Public Safety plays a vital role in safeguarding our society, uphold, upholding the rule of law, and promoting public trust and confidence in our institutions. Therefore, the appointment of its Commissioner is a matter of great importance, one that demands careful consideration and deliberation. Over the course of this hearing, we will have the opportunity to hear from the nominee directly about his vision for the Department of Public Safety, his philosophy, and his commitment to serving the people of the Commonwealth. The EAGI has an important responsibility of considering the qualifications and suitability of Mr. Macarons to serve as Commissioner of the Department of Public Safety. This is a critical duty, and I appreciate each of the contributions of the members of this committee for their commitment, understanding, and cooperation to this process. I want to thank Mr. Macarons for making time to come here and for his willingness, willingness to serve and for appearing before us today. I also wanna thank everyone who has participated, including the public and all those who testified and those watching in their homes today. Mr. Macarons, Macarons, I now ask that you please rise and raise your right hand. And Mr. Macarons, our, Mr. Macarons will administer the oath to you.
Anthony Iglesias Macarons, you do solemnly swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you shall give in the matter at hand shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. You may be seated. I will now give you the floor, Mr. Macarons, to make any opening remarks, should you choose to address the committee.
Good morning, esteemed Chairwoman, distinguished committee members, respected committee members, and valued viewers. Before I commence, I would like to express my gratitude to the Honorable Governor Arnold I. Palacios and Lieutenant Governor David M. Apetang for entrusting me with the responsibility in serving as the seventeenth Permanent Commissioner of the Cinema Department of Public Safety. I am Anthony Iglesias Macarons, a recently retired Assistant Chief of Police with over thirty-five years of experience serving the Cinema Department of Public Safety as a police officer. Throughout my years of service, I have developed a deep understanding of the institution's culture and norms and employees who dedicate themselves to maintaining law and order. Despite the challenges that comes with the job, I have always had faith in the institution's integrity and the importance of upholding the rule of law. I remain committed to this mission as I take on this new role. Today, I will address the turbulence and challenges I'm facing the Department of Public Safety. I have reviewed the twenty-twenty-three Transition Committee Report prepared for the Palacios-Apetang administration, which highlights numerous challenges within the department. As the new Commissioner, I am dedicated to addressing these issues, which are relatively easy to remedy and exemplary leadership and approach. The Department of Public Safety should remain free from political influence and interference as a paramilitary and law enforcement institution. As the only politically appointed employee within the department, I prefer to keep it that way. The department's relationship with key federal, local, and local law enforcement partners have been strained sometimes, causing serious concerns. To address these issues, I have taken steps to meet with key law enforcement officials to ensure them of our commitment in correcting past mistakes and building stronger partnership. The Transition Committee Report highlights several key issues that require immediate attention, such as the lack of basic and specialized law enforcement training, unfair personnel reassignment, morale degradation, political coercion, social media outbreaks that can compromise investigations, inventory of evidence and vehicles, lack of proper documentation and disposal process, security fencing at the impound lot, inadequate ammunition for firearms recertification, lack of appropriate standard-issue equipment, uniforms, and gears, personal overtime abuse, and overall practice of staffing distribution within the Criminal Investigation Bureau and the department in general. To address this issue, I have implemented the following initiatives immediately following my confirmation. Developing and implementing a new organizational structure that maximizes efficiency in delivering essential public safety services. Issuing and adopting a merit-based policy for all human resource deployment and development aspects. Conducting a comprehensive review of all department policies to amend or revise them to address issue of political coercion, personal reassignment decisions, proper documentation of boarding safety activities, and evidence handling unauthorized social media experiments, overtime abuse, disposal of evidence and impound vehicles, vehicle transfers and survey, and other key findings that, that impact policy. Requiring all, requiring all procurements of materials and services to undergo competitive selection process to, as established in the rules and regulation of the Division of Procurement Services. reinstating in-service training with the Department of Public Safety Personnel or Employing Employee Handbook by our department's legal counsel, following a thorough review to regulate behaviors and circumstances deemed unbecoming or inappropriate. Forging partnership with federal and local law enforcement agencies to maximize outcome in demonstration of justice. Collaborating with federal and local law enforcement partnership in developing law, training plans and programs consistent with the peace officer standards and training post requirement to meet national police training, training standards. Finally, working with the Chief Prosecutor and Attorney General to promptly dispose of impound vehicles and case evidence. And finally, I am committed to the Department of Public Safety's mission, and I'm confident that with exemplary leadership and, and approach, we can overcome the challenges and obstacles. Thank you for your time and attention, and I'm ready for to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Macarons. At this time, we will begin the question and answer portion. And I will now recognize Senator Karina Magovna.
Si dos maas, Chairwoman. Good morning, Mr. Macarons, and para todi mangai giguini. I guess I'd first like to thank you. Ni un fatina si decision para un accepta i nomination gini ni gubernotas and is a tall Lieutenant Governor. So thank you for your acceptance of that nomination. I've reviewed your resume, and there's no question or doubt about your credentials, your work experience, your education, and most importantly, the skills and training that are listed on your resume. So it's quite extensive and I would have to say that I'm very impressed. So, great job in acquiring all that throughout your years of service in the law enforcement. And so I really have no questions regarding your professional background. What my line of questions will be focused on your leadership style and your character. So with that said, first, I'd like to clarify, is it true that you're on pro bono as acting?
Yes, ma'am.
And again, as I said, I will be focusing on your char- character. So that's already a plus on your character. Next is your, so we've heard all the testimonies from the individuals came in to provide support in your nomination, as well as the letters of support that we received, as mentioned by our Chairwoman. But I'd like to hear from you personally, what made you decide to come back and serve the community after retiring? Thank you.
During my time, I was residing in Texas. I've been, I, I keep getting calls, get messages from the, the officers, and they're very adamant in asking me to reconsider and come back home. Which I did. I came back home. I, I just stayed low and just continued to, to observe what's, what's the activity of the department is going on. A lot of it that the officers are complaining is based on leadership issue, their reassignment, and the, the process of how they've been investigated by internal affairs. That seems that they put them in awkward position. So I, so with hearing this, with, hear this, I decided to, to see what, what I can offer to returning back to the department. But unfortunately, I was, I was taken by the, by Commissioner Torres to the Department of Corrections as his deputy. But even in those time, I still interact with the officer and they still air their, their, their issues, their concerns about the, the way that department is run, and that includes also the lack of trainings and trainings that are only given to people that are, are, are selected. So after, after just hearing those things, when I was appointed by, by Governor Palacios, I, I took that stance that I will come back and I will, I will do what I can to, to actually make the department a better place for our officers to, to, to work, even though that we're, we're into those challenges right now. I am still, I'm still able to come to work and, and continue to find solution. As I, as I echo out to my command staff that when we come to the department, come here with solution. We have enough problems to bring over. So bring over solutions so we can effectively move the department forward.
Thank you for your response, Comis- Acting Commissioner. You kind of already answered some of my questions when you gave your opening remarks. And I'm very happy to hear that in the, what, two months that you've been in there as, in acting capacity, you've already made some of observations and assessment as to what are some of the issues and challenges that the department faces. And, and that's great because you actually have solutions that you would like to implement upon confirmation. So with that, my question was gonna be, since you became acting, what were some of the top challenges and issues that you observed while you were on there? And what are some of the resolution that you hope to implement to resolve that? You, you talked about turbulence and Officer Fittile, I believe, described the department as rough waters. Could you please elaborate what you, what you or Officer Fittile meant by that? So that the committee can better understand the situation that the department faces and how you, with your leadership, how you plan to resolve those issues?
Thank you, Senator Magovna. The, the turbulence and the rough waters that they were referring to is the unequal leadership and, and the no sense of directions for the officers to, to move forward. And, and even the simplest to go out and, and serve the community. The community itself are suffering because of some of our officers' behavior and attitude when they're confronting with the, with the community. So one way to, to put the officers in place and to kind of ease the turbulence is to put them into uniform. So that way now they can have a little bit of respect from the community so they can also represent the department they're working for. Other, other issues that we're, we're facing to are officers disciplinary that are occurring and ongoing. These are the things that I'm, I'm fixing that, that hopefully that will, will put the officer back, back in line after, after being, been in the disciplinary process. So that way we can put them out in the street again. And the most of all challenges, like, like one of the, the people that came and talked is the, the, the high turnover of police officers that are, are resigning because of, of green of pasture or for family issue. So I am looking forward to, to hopefully that they give me enough FTEs to hire more and replace the officers that, that have already left. And I'm, and I'm pretty much sure I, I have over thirty officers that left the department before I stepped into the department. So those are the challenges that I, that I'm looking to. The other, the other challenges that you asked is the real ID. The real ID is one of the issues now that I'm facing. It's not, it's, it's, it's only about the financial part that I need to, to cover the, the services before we can resume. And also the, making some corrective measures to, to expedite and, and see what, how we can fix this before the, we have to meet the compliance by twenty twenty-five. So I'm, I'm working hard with, with our administrative support staff and motor vehicle in addressing the, the financial issue so that we can move forward with the real ID.
Okay. Si dos maas, Acting Commissioner, for that. You know, since you've been in there, have you observed any any intimidation issues or division between the officers or personnel, specifically in the form of like a division because of cultural and ethnicity differences? Is, is that a problem in the department?
I have not seen any of divisions that, that have been occurring in our, in the department since I, since I came in, in January thirty.
Okay. So I'm just sharing with you because it has been brought to my attention that there has been allegedly, there has been some preferential treatment between the officers, specifically between the Carolinian officers and Chamois officers. So if you're not aware of that perspective, I'm sharing it with you. So maybe that's something that you might wanna look into.
I was sure that I've been meeting with the Director of Police every now and then. And those issues have not been, been raised to my attention. But should, should it be erased, that is one of the issues that I have to put corrective measures so that we could, we will not have this animosity and, and division within the department.
Si dos maas. I'm glad to hear that. Next, are you, have you had a chance to look at the Citizen Centric report for twenty twenty-three?
I have not reviewed that, even though that I just end up reviewing the, the transition report. And of course, every day I have to, I have to attend, attend to issues that are coming to the department. But no, ma'am, I haven't, I haven't reviewed that centric report.
Okay. I guess in looking at the progress report under DPS Patrol section, I noticed that there's a high volume of disturbing the peace at a thousand ninety-eight. I mean, I don't, for me, that's pretty high, but I don't know. In your experience, would you say that, you know, a thousand ninety-eight of that situation is high?
That is not a surprise to me. As you know, disturbing the peace is common.
Okay.
A disturbing peace can be a call for service where a person just needs to be removed and just log in as a call of service. A disturbing peace can be an, an active complaint. Or a disturbing peace can be just something that we can, because of the, the, how the law was written. We cannot, the police officers cannot do much to, to make an arrest unless there's a victim. There's a victim being affected. That is the, the challenge is some of officers. So why the number of disturbing pieces is high is because of those So why the number of disturbing pieces is high is because of those commenting. The officer respond, even just for a person walking in the street and shouting, that could be a disturbing piece. But again, it all boils down to who is the real victim of the disturbing piece?
Okay, so is the challenge because there is lack of legislation in place to be able to resolve some of those disturbing the peace issues?
It could, it could be a legislation issue. If, if the, if a such legislation can be introduced that instead of a disturbing piece can be public intoxication, that can, that can reduce that disturbing piece because public intoxication is either a sizable offense or an arrestable offense. But a disturbing piece is a criminal offense, so that's, that's what makes a difference. We can avoid the disturbing piece by implementing a public intoxication so we can remove that person.
Okay.
And safely put them in a, in a drunk tank so they can sober. Or a person is just being disorder, meaning they, they, they're just out there to, to find problems. And, and just, just make the police officer's job a, a bit challenges. Because they, they're out there just to air their concern. It could be something psychological. Or it can be just a person that has nothing better to do but to just go out there and, and, and kind of just agitate people so they can, he can get that attention. But if we have legislation that can, can cut, instead of a disturbing piece, we can put them only as a public intoxication. That will help out a little bit of the disturbing piece issue.
Okay, thank, thank you for, for that explanation. And I've been looking at a lot of existing legislations pertaining to law enforcement and trying to see how we can tighten up a lot of these legislations and put more teeth into it. Because not only are they wasting the resources of DPS, they are, you know, it, it puts out this perception to the public that, you know, they are not safe. And I'm not trying to be heartless. I'm just, you know, we also need to put some accountability in, in some of the actions that, you know, these individuals are taking. And I, I personally feel like, you know, there's, there's a lot of legislations that we need to improve upon so that we can tighten those up and put more teeth into it. And not just bring somebody into the cell and leave them there overnight only to let them out the next day and commit the same offense or violation. I mean, really, we need to start disciplining our people too, you know, and so.
And, and I, if I like to include also, Senator, also the disturbing piece can be a civil matter. Where the officer comes to the scene and it's only pertaining to land, land issues.
Okay.
Or it's just about family dispute over, over property that's been on probate. So those are, those are the things too that the officer will come to the scene and then find out that it's not a criminal, but it's actually a civil because it's just a family issue.
So, so disturbing piece is kind of broad then depending on what the situation is?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the, the minute that they, they, the dispatcher described that it's, it's an argument, it's a disturbing piece. But it can be a different, like a, like I said, it could be a civil matter, which is the, the police don't really get involved in civil matter but criminal. Or it could be an actual disturbing piece where family are, are fighting amongst each other or they're fighting with their, with their, with their neighbors. So it, it, it goes, it goes boils down to those kinds of issues.
Thank you. I, I, again, still under the DPS Patrol Station, I just want some clarification. There's one here that says other criminal response or other response noncriminal. Can, can you help us understand what, what those, what kind of activities fall into that category?
And that category, Senator, like I said, it could be a civil, civil matter. Or it could be a truancy case. Or it's just they come over so they can talk to the children because they don't wanna listen.
Okay.
Those are some of the, the noncriminal. Or they, or they, they, they were called there because of issues pertaining to, to the, to the neighbor's dog. Or it's just a noise that, that annoying them, but it's not criminal.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Under Criminal Investigation Division, I see that there, as you know, twenty twenty-three report shows that there's a total of seven hundred two crimes against persons. You know, what, what is the division or the department is doing to process these as quickly as they can with the resources that you guys have? You know, and what, what if any challenges does the department have? So that we can help this division, you know, give them the, the tools and the resources that they need to do their job so that we can help reduce some of these crimes and investig-, in their investigation?
Yes. The, the biggest challenges with the, with CID right now is manpower. Under that, under that division, there's a crimes against person, against property, juvenile homicide, and other, and other related cases. To alleviate that, I have met with some of my key leaders to start allowing patrol officers to start closing those misdemeanor cases where they can just close the case and just forward the, the case over to AG. Instead of giving it to detective where they can, they can better investigate crimes that are, that are more needed their attention than those that are just the ordinary, like I said, disturbing piece. Or even assault and battery, a, 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 a uniform officer can close that case. If they identify there's a victim, there's a suspect and the suspect has been arrested. Well, once he come past that case, he can move that case over to AG instead of giving it to CID. And the CID do what's, what they can do is the same thing. So one of the challenges, like I said, is manpower. There is not enough manpower, it, it, there could be under the, under the crimes against person can be only three people. It can be just two because under, under CID, like I said, I just mentioned some of the, some of the units they have. So right now, I'm, I'm, I'm meeting, like I, I said, I, I already met with the, with my key leaders that to start implementing a open and shut case where the uniform officer can do that so that he can free a little bit of the investigators to do more serious crime.
Okay, thank you. And, and one last question, Madam Chair. In your opening statement, you had mentioned, one of the issues you had mentioned was the lack of training within your department. And I know that funding is always an issue even with other departments. So, but I think it's so crucial that your people are well trained, not just well trained, but properly trained, at least with the basic training, right? To fully understand what their roles and responsibilities are when they go into, into the community to do their jobs. So knowing that funding is an issue, what are some of your plans to try and mediate that? That part of the problem?
Since I, since I came in, I started to meet with federal, federal law enforcement stakeholders and, and partners. They have offered some of specialized trainings, especially for both uniform and, and plainclothes officers. They, they offer this training as, is free. So that, that's, that's a plus that, that I'm really working, I'm really working with them. I also got the, the NITSA with the National Traffic, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. They offer some trainings that I, I could give it over to uniform officers to, to better themselves investigating crashes or any other traffic-related matters. And I'm, I'm also working with, with other agencies, like One Police is to try and, and, and see what, what they can offer to, to bring, bring instructors over to Saipan so they can actually train. But that's not, not just Saipan, that includes Rodentini. Though, those are the things that I'm, that I'm working to, to bring in so that I could properly train the officers. And in the near future too, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at bringing Rodentini officers to Saipan so they can be on, on, on the job training for a couple of months so that they can hold their skills on police work. So that way, when they go back, they, they, they will not be left out that they, they didn't have enough knowledge to continue doing the police job. So, so those are the things that I'm, that I'm, that I'm addressing. Especially, I'm still looking forward on other trainings, especially if, if some of the granters, the federal granters that are, that are offering trainings to send officers to off island. I, I, I changed that attitude and says, just bring the instructor here so that everybody will benefit instead of just two officers, three officers or, or one officer. So bring that person training also, I could train all the officers.
You, sorry, Chairwoman, just one more, you see, you talked about federal grants. And in the centric report, it, it, there's a couple of grants here that were awarded in twenty twenty-three. One was for nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars and the other one was fifty-three thousand. But zero has been expended. Is there a reason why this money is still sitting there and has not been used?
It could be a, a couple reasons. One of them is probably the, the, the past leadership probably didn't avail or didn't push, push any, any means to, to use that money for its purpose. Or there is an intent purpose for, for others, but they, but they, they cannot use that money for, for its intended purpose.
Okay, so I, I know that you say you haven't had a chance to look at the Citizen Centric Report, but when you do get a chance, take a look at page three. Because there's a, a balance of one point seven million dollars that have yet to be expended. And I'm not sure what the purposes are, are for those particular grants. But, you know, definitely please make use of those money so that you can, you know, take better care of your department.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair IU.
Thank you, Senator Magovnia. And next I will recognize Senator Donald Maloney.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, Acting Commissioner. And again, congratulations on your appointment to DPS. I just wanna just make a few comments and then ask some questions. Kind of be a bit all over the place because a lot of the things you've already mentioned in your opening as well as your response to Senator Magovnia. I do wanna address something that was mentioned under public comments by one of the officers. And that's, in, that's in regards to like the Citizen Centric Report. And basically the needs of the department. As you've known, I've chaired the Fiscal Affairs and Ways and Means when I was at the House for the past couple of years. And it frustrates me that every time I ask or the committee asks, what is it that the department needs? The response we get is, we're fine with what we have. And that's maybe because the department has, you know, they don't wanna go against the governor or the administration. But, you know, we really appreciate the time and effort it, it, that the department makes in trying to really address the needs that aren't addressed by the administration. And that's to help your agency or the agencies. And in other hearings, like with the Civil Service Commission, with other agencies, the one thing that I try to, to argue for and fight for is a, a study on the, the salaries, especially of law enforcement officials. And to try to update what's in the statute or what's in the regulations by OPM to do a desk audit. I know they, they kind of did one two years ago on DPS and DEFMS. It didn't really provide the information that we needed. And so I hope that, you know, maybe you or OPM can continue working on a, a desk audit to really determine, you know, the disparity in pay as well as trying to increase pay. I know they've suspended night differentials and hazardous pay and stuff like that. And so, you know, at a time like this, when we have to suspend those additional pay, why don't we address that through increasing the base pay? And so with that, with that comment, I'd like to ask. I was looking at the, at your, the proposed budget for next fiscal year and I see that there are at least forty-two vacant positions. It wasn't funded to be filled. And so with your current manpower, are you, would you say that it's still insufficient to properly run the department?
Senator, I'll be honest with you. Since I came in the department, department's never been sustained in, in enough manpower till today. It's because the salary, it was not a, a attractive to, to bring in. Or it's just people just, just can do police work. But yes, till now, I still have insufficient people to, to maintain the manpower need to, to bring out the service out to the community.
So even if you were to attempt to restructure the divisions with what you currently have, there's still, it still wouldn't be sufficient to cover down on all the divisions?
That is correct.
Okay, because I think, you know, and maybe this could be looked into further. If DPS on all three islands can, can restructure or see if their current personnel can sustain the department and provide for, then maybe we don't have to fill these vacant positions. And maybe we can use those salaries to increase the, the, the pay of these employees as opposed to just finding every opportunity to, to fill these vacancies. And so I hope that when we do meet with you in the next few months as we go through the budget process, that I hope that maybe you can have a better answer then as you look through all your, your vacancies and see if that's, if that's still the case then. And then, you know, then we can go ahead and consider other options as far as reinstating night differential. I do see that in, in talking about pay and trying to increase salaries for your officers, has the department gone through rigorous performance evaluations of all officers?
I have reviewed some performance that came to my office, but not, not all.
During your time, was, was it even a practice to go through performance evaluations of all officers or?
It, it, it should be a practice.
But it wasn't ever really a practice back then?
No.
And so you've already begun the process of assessing the assignment of your officers into all these various sites and agencies? Has that, have you made any changes as to maybe cutting back or getting back your officers in that sense? Because I, I know, it's no secret that with the recent situation with an officer being assigned to some Homeland Security Office, have you already gone through the process of reassessing where all your officers are assigned to?
Yes, in regards to what you just mentioned, yes, I've already corrected that, that, that issue. Not, not in all general that I've, I've make it, made any reassessments. But I am, I'm basically looking at which is the critical area that I need to put people where they can have to carry out some of the, the missions out to the community. Even, even the, the areas where, where, like the logistics, you know. In, in the long run, I might have to move some of those people out into the street because that's, that's how desperate I need people on the street. Right now, the, 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 the numbers of officer for the committee is outnumbered. So I am finding other avenues and even, even, even cutting a CID down to a skeleton crew to try and meet some of the community. But as much as I can, I, I have to sustain those people in CID because of, of the numbers of cases coming in. So even with that, I have to make some, some adjustments. And that, and, and that's not only those, there's others like the motor carrier, highway patrol. The tactical unit are, are also being, been placed out to augment the, the frontline people.
Okay. That's, in the topic of training and professional development, you know, I think that, just even talking with the officers on road, they lack several certifications or recert. And I hope that you can consider, you know, even if you can't get the presenters down here, maybe send one or two even. And then when they come back, then you use those officers to provide those trainings to the, to the rest of the workforce. And so that's one consideration I, I would like to propose as well as looking at your budget for the next fiscal year. It looks like all your employees are locally funded. Are there any, has the department made any shift into trying to see how some of these can be partially funded through federal grants?
I could look into that, Senator. I, I know at one point they, they were trying to put the highway patrol officers into federal because of the, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. But it went, it was unsuccessful because of a lot of the requirements they need. So there's not, there's not a whole lot. Most of the federal fundings that comes in are only to support for equipments and trainings. there's not, there's not a whole lot. Um most of the federal fundings that comes in are only to support for equipments and trainings. Uh so right now, but as far as uh employment, I've I've not seen yet, but probably I could sit down and reexamine some of those and and probably talk to the grantors and see what how can they help uh the department in sustaining some of those.
And if you can do that, because I will help with providing or shifting some of those salaries to your operations um for next fiscal year. Speaking of funding, there, you mentioned the challenges with the real ID. Um so basically, I wanted to ask, how do we come to this mess? Um are we charging enough to ensure that the program is self um sustainable, or are we are we able to charge more in order to ensure that the fees are met each year to for this company to continue to provide its services, or? Do we need, is it, I I think, if I'm not mistaken, it might be the price within the law, and so is that something that we need to change? What do you think?
Uh Senator, I I don't think those are the issue. The issue is right now is paying the services. Uh because we we in debt, uh I'll be honest with you, six hundred thousand in order for us to continue with the ID pro- the real ID program. The program is working itself, it's just the services that we need to pay in order for us to get online and then uh making sure that uh your driver's license will be recognized by TSA and the Department of uh Department of Homeland Security through the TSA. Uh that's the, those things are in place already, it's just to pay the service so we can get back in line again.
Is the service a fee that's paid yearly, or is it a one-time fee?
It's a yearly, yearly.
Right, so okay, so now that brings me back to my question is, are we charging enough to support the the cost of the the service?
Um.
Under this real ID program?
I'm pretty much sure the 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 current, but uh uh the current charges, because I know it's like fifty dollars for for the real ID, but uh let me get back then and I'll see again, I'll reexamine uh the the real issue as to that, and I'll I'll get back to you, Senator.
Okay, um because if it is uh the 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 fee and not charging enough, and if it is in the statute, then that's something that the legislature will have to amend. The next thing I wanna uh turn over to is just some of the enforcement and um one question that I have under that is uh would you support the uh amendment to the tinting laws and that it follows national law?
Yes, I do.
Okay, um do you support removing the US citizen requirement under the Local Driver's License Act?
Yes, I do.
Okay, um and you know, tha- that's one of the bills that I I have that is in the JZL Committee, um and so we're trying to figure out solutions to this, and it's trying to um ensure that everyone in the CNMI, regardless of status, is protected, but also um you know, they are driving lawfully and 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 are insured or can become insured. And and speaking of that, uh insurance and and registration, has the department, Nick, I I hate to sort neglected, but um is the department actively citing operators whose vehicles are not registered? Is that? Um.
Yes, and both uh uninsured.
So at any time, they they drive behind a car that's not registered, will they get pulled over?
Yes.
Even today?
Yes.
Okay, um. Are school zones being monitored?
Yes.
Okay.
It might not be physically the officers there, but they're they're doing roving patrols to assure that the safety of the of the kids are in place.
I think there, if I may recommend that more presence, at least from now until whenever we see a change in behavior to, um I guess, kind of make people aware that they're not allowed to to speed or drive the normal um speed limit in school zones. Um as a matter of fact, last week I was driving through San Vicente and the lights were blinking because it was around the time where cars should be sl- um slowing down, but they're still driving at regular speed. So we gotta change the behavior of our operators and try to um, you know.
I will, I will.
Protect the.
I will address that issue, Senator. I will address that issue.
Thank you, um. And then just going back to the vehicle registration, while I know you mentioned that there are the officers are pulling people over if a vehicle is not registered, um even today, we still see so many vehicles with expired tags. And so in addressing the the driver's license issue, which again is in the committee, um we wanted to see and maybe uh recommend or probably do some kind of uh amnesty, that's the term they use with the tax, right? Kind of have this clean slate for all operators and then try to get them on board and try to get them educated in terms of trying to get um, you know, because back to uh licensed um and registered. And I I also say this because a lot of the requests, a lot of the, we we get a lot of funding requests and a lot of the, while we don't have much resources in the general fund, I know the agencies have revolving fund accounts, and so these are accounts that can be used for the agency to adjust a shortfall from the budget. And so, you know, um a stronger push for for getting people registered would provide for you know, a portion of those monies that will go into your revolving fund to help address some of your your shortfall. Uh one thing I I ask that you look into, and uh this can be brought up in the budget hearing, is at least for the first quarter of the of the current fiscal year, DPS have overspent close to a little over four hundred thousand, and that's just within the first three months. So I hope that you can determine where that is coming from, um and uh well, maybe this was prior to you coming in, and so I hope that um this can be looked into and determine how to either bring them that figure down in the upcoming uh quarters, or what are the challenges that um is causing DPS to overrun its budget?
I may if I, Senator, I think probably this is just because of uh vehicle maintenance and uh overtime that will supplement uh patrol shifts uh due to lack of manpower because of uh officers calling in sick or they're on leave. That could be one of the issues, or uh it could be other uh errors that they need to pay, that probably this is, I'm just, I'm just saying. But um just so you know that we're also getting, uh officers are getting paid uh directing traffic on B Street uh through the uh FIBA, the Federal Highway. Uh they're getting paid to to for the services.
Yeah, but that will be a separate funding, not through the general fund, and so that's why I'm trying to figure out how is this, I mean, that's close to half a million dollars in just the first quarter. Um and so there's gonna be a big change in the way officers will be getting paid in the next fiscal year. I mean, austerity from the looks of it is being applied to the officers for the next fiscal year, whereas it's not applied to the officers now.
Mm-hmm.
Um have you already begun to look at how to address that if the legislature decides to proceed with the governor's proposal?
I have not, but uh I'll I'll make, I'll sit down with the the key leaders in the department to come up with a strategic plan how to deal with this.
Okay, um thank you, and one last recommendation. Um as you, you know, and I appreciate you mentioning this in your opening uh statement. Um you know, some of the initiatives you are taking now and will continue to take in the upcoming months, uh just, you know, it's just to to work with the the legislature and updating a lot of these statutes um that would either, you know, that would essentially make your operations runs uh smoother and um and to assist you in in ensuring that a lot of the the statutes that are in place are are, you know, going to be enforced. You know, that's a lot of the things that uh we hear a lot of these arguments that you know, we need to, we need to do this, we need to do that, but then again, you know, we've, no matter how many laws we can can, we can get enacted, the the issue is enforcement, and so how can we help you so that you can enforce these laws? And so I hope that um as you, you know, like you've been there thirty, over thirty years, and so um you you know that the change in dynamics, you know, the the change in what's going on in the rest of the world and how we can change also uh what's in in the law and and how we can help assist in making you run your department more efficiently. And so with that, again, thank you, and I I wish you all the best as you look for calmer waters, and so um if there's anything that you need, again, you know, we're here to support you and and all the agencies to try to to help um help you in your case. And so uh congratulations again, and uh at this time, I yield.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Maloney. I now recognize the other Senator Maloney.
Okay, thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. Uh Buenos, Commissioner, uh Tu wanna i oresta kumakadada lo bechagea mun kun saise zuku concern. Uh finiina ilengun on taitai i transition report, no?
Okay.
Uh mapus alarming eji transition report. Za malaga zu be faishino ko pobebe ma esti retaliation nepotism chronism politics ma- micro management i DPS?
Uh gi pro sentit nu taza nu turi litsa bia lo zangipus kausuna guamo na tunguzo pe siidas nu murek.
Aji ma sign uh Attorney General ma sign para i DPS? Guama sign? A- aji, aji no?
Si i kolemo i abogado.
Oh, aji na bugaro?
Si Edward Manbusan.
Sorry?
Edward Manbusan.
Oh, taza ma sign special eji para amzu?
Uh taza, taza.
Taza, that you work with uh on uh legal issues?
Komuti, komu nu guados, gautuna personat si nu señora nu relani ogomuru pasi senior nu Robbie Glass gi bandan nu gua bandan nu 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 kusongi gan department.
Okay, siya be faishino za unu na siya binti be faishino pa na juda mi agan yene dos za atan esti na na report ne, izi tamanus distasia ne?
Hmm.
Za look, is there other ways that they can come up uh after reviewing the laws and and give us changes to the law so that we can make sure that we don't see these issues come out, come about again in the future? I mean, I'm sure that maybe we can, for example, uh DPS personnel are supposed to be non-political and uh at the office and during working hours, example, you know, ne?
Uh, okay.
How can we make sure, put thief in the law so that we don't have this issue in the future? Uh gov maga deshti, kaus koba sta mu nga man afansao ne, polisia even after hours. You know, di temana di guaziya federal employees, right? And I don't know, I'm thinking out loud here, ne, lo eji, let's put it in the law, na ti siya man involved i politika, masia man off. No, I mean, I don't know, is that in the in the books? I don't know, lo. Let's be tough now so that, uh because I hear from all the the people that were up here that they talk about trust in the community, you know?
Hmm.
So azudham, fire fire, na na ayam nifin za ta tulai ka ilai, za wansangfuro basta sia non, eno na na concern. Uh okay, poseni i otu uh taitai gini put um put eji cooperation with federal partners?
Hmm.
Are we back to normal with the federal partners? Uh the officer na na programa and what agreement do we have with them that uh are not there anymore? Are we back to normal again, oh?
Gi terigon nu nu senior nu Senator. Ane antisti be ritirogi polisia nu bula wuna ti tema nu na guaha nu separashonu stagi i polisia za ni federal, federala. Pesa, ane malumu tati nu u napusibli na pabi alizankada uno na na na.
Okay, posenian review todi cooperative agreement that we had in the past, uh the review, and I know this is not the only opportunity we'll be meeting in the future, so review all cooperative agreements with the federal and maybe uh let us know uh on our next uh meetings, no? Of enosias, I we, I think that we should be working cooperatively with them, no? So revisit fun enosia, no? I i otu esti um be faishina, I mentioned si Senator Kurina put eji real ID. Can we make sure that when you work on that, you're also putting in tinian and RODA so that we have the same uh equipment and same service and nu waloki gigi za RODA, ne, and often a grand rafa, that we address also because right now, you know, different zota license card, RODA, different uh sarapan, if you're in the States, they're wondering are they two different government or just one government, so we should all have the same, you know, ID and and driver's license? No, just just one driver's license, ne, na classic.
Okay.
Fabor atan faneno, no? Um in in RODA, uh according to the report, gonna be a police officer, they use out-of-pocket, no? Paramafundus ya toiletry, no cleaning supplies, no meals, pero eji se personario. Is that ongoing still? I'm just wondering.
Uh ali ottimo ni obisita lutagi gi feberu nu malatunga zu na i i ma stakilo na na concern i general communication. Za piniti zusa pasangana zu na na i personar telefonia manasissabhi poro ma chogitutu polisia. Za di gena manpus nu u u mapus olalaji tamano pabi azuda she pu banen no she na 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 tiklu, nu gi gi tinengo purene i neka nu gipselu tau nu timasangonizu pa gua nu tungu na na palobrosu na na manasisi pesalepina. Pa gui supply nu nu talu nu ti ti ma bring up eno na concern lo zangin baga na ma susedi debi be man tungu za koskesi ni be be atan za be azurado zia luki geno she na banda manera.
Por favor, zangua se kareta man ma pegagim bandan, ne, no, sa taza parts, but nu tijemama repair za timanong kareta. Atan afaneno, uh Commissioner, appreciate uh denantio ne radio uh putanti, no? Uh which reminds me, esti i surveillance camera gi Commonwealth White? Ta use no nu nu na na device gi da Mariana's?
Gi pro sentit taza nu kalalamtin na enu na 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 petekan na na kosas. Lo staguaha nu manmofata ti gi fishino poro ma established is a poro ma na kalamtine, no?
Paro gua programa ne pata pegase surveillance camera gi
Okay.
Dislocation, no?
Komu ibanda nishai tourist site nu
Tagana se.
Pega, gatu gi di Hotel Street, i i fishat, i polisia poro ma maneha i
Oh, siya manali amduza ni OGM, Office of Ground Management sa per pagu ne solar, no? Siya masia taza power, electricidad gi chogu na lumta nu siya mapegatsi. Siya man na judam zenu sukona si sa polisia bandan tourist, ne? Ta ugu xia tuka nu banan ladder beach eji recently ne ugu nu ma ma mahandmi karetan tau tau ne, zati kopunitu eno se sa eno se na tourist ma gira se tati masangan baba nu tanota za nu nu i i ulan crime gini, ne?
Hmm.
Pus, tu tu tungu afana gi pagu ne esti na technology akasa gaigi ti ma use no za federal grant bula si Epi siya apply, ne, za por favor, ta use esti sa esti geni siya ta tungu zangin gua ma susedi gi za tanapak or gi da si Nepalu, no?
Okay.
Isita ta gatsa aji nu man involved, you know? Pus, uh eni eni gi uno za be faishin fanesti sa unu na officer gini gini in Washington State?
Hmm.
Kantu, apalum i police officer one is a CNMI? Kantu, no, then kantu Washington, then kantu Guam? I'm just curious. Cause debi no, zasipiki budget ta diskute, no, ne, lo? Mapus nu nama namaman, you know, kantu uh Commissioner, eh entry level gi polisia?
Suguru zona zangipaybe kompara is aururu i Washington State, pres Guam, presita CNMI. No, this is size uh nu Mizona ni i
Size mid, no?
Mid, i i polisia na pohalum. Pesa magadua gi Academy no Kawulu gi benti uno.
Gi CNMI?
Uh, okay.
Twenty-one Guam, kantu nu gi?
Guam, ma masangana za na Kawulu gi twenty-six.
I entry, gi after magadua gi Academy.
entry ka na benti nuebi. Pesa magadua twenty-six nu mid, nu shudumu.
Hmm, zapo se man ba gradu. Hmm. The pusher man ma graduagini gi wa man apply, no? Nu Guam, ba nuzu ma ma kunia, push it at remaining, push manono sa nu cooperate qualifications, ya, no?
Okay.
I guess eni gi high turnover, no?
Okay.
Oh, no, no. Madam Chair, bula questionta, lo guasiya oportunidad, lo be biru tati ne eji i transition report. Kolan stopbasu manpuzi i ofishaat sia temanu tadsai murao, temanu gua crossi community da za ngin uh mangegi di xa na problema, ne? Eno za ngua overtime, ma adik aji porfa no overtime, ngua nu event ma adik aji porfa nono, pe training, pa du. Na parafan, you know, za basta di ta ugo, you know, Commissioner, ne? Za na ayam ne nifin ne para ben midgudi lai za mandisto am todam, mandisto ben azuda, you know? Uh eno apa paragunu chair, no sidosmase, no sidosmase Commissioner, then
Thank you.
Doresi ofishaat ne?
Sidosmase, Senator Mangonya.
Za no be sangonizitay gi ne na, yemagre Commissioner kandabintiti pa be botau sa gualu ki zuku conflict, tresbe na puloversu, Commissioner gi the last thirty years, ne? Pa be sangonizu, you know, ubiai pushid bio, govmoli matana, lo? U sisid bio zulau, magre di disstrap, ne? U pegagi pa pa fau sa akadida gaga gau, ne? Lo? Aliye, Commissioner, za push taza no lo be dispensal, Commissioner, you know, sidosmase.
Thank you, Senator Paul. Recognize Senator Kurina Magofnia.
I know that the time is um pretty late, but I just have some uh follow-up questions, couple of follow-up questions. Um Senator Donald had mentioned about, you know, the uh the speed limit um in the school zone during school hours. And I I know that you said that they have uh police officers that do their
Yes.
Their being there. Uh but has the department considered uh potentially um putting some some of those traffic cams that takes, you know, in the States, right?
Hmm.
Uh they have that in the school zones most especially, but also in heavy uh like major intersections of the streets. Has the department considered putting those cameras on so that even without police presence, you right? During school hours, especially in the morning and after schools? Uh you know, those individuals who, you know, should know better to slow down during those hours? Uh you know, can get those traffic tickets and that's one way to also generate revenue?
Yes, I I'll look into that and I'll 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 see that uh that could be possible.
Okay. And then also um just talking about enforcement, right? He he brought up enforcement. Uh many, many times, I've stopped by at stores and I would observe vehicles parked on the handicap uh parking space. And some of the stores only have one uh parking stall for handicap. I'm I'm not sure if this is your department's uh scope of work where they're supposed to issue tickets, but there have been times when I observed that a police officer at the store see, you know, I mean, I I it's just um natural for me to look at whether or not they have the sticker or the placard or, you know, any any sort of indication that they are authorized to park that. And many times, honestly, people park there, taking up space when, you know, a a person with real needs uh pulls up and there's no parking for them. So I have observed uh, you know, at times when police officers were there, but they didn't really even do anything. And, you know, uh sometimes I take my job too seriously. And even though I'm not a police officer, I would actually approach that vehicle, knock on the windows, excuse me. Do you have any eh any, you know, sticker or the placard to authorize you to park in this? Because if you're not, then please move your car so that the, when a person who actually needs that parking stall comes up, you know, that that space is available for them. So again, going back to enforcement, active enforcement, right? Also, uh I would like to recommend to please have your officers be uh familiarized themselves with the laws, you know, that pertains to enforcement for DPS. For example, you know, I I live in Garapan and many, many times I would see vehicles parked on uh sidewalks. And I I, you know, I think police officers should know that that's illegal. But many times, uh you know, they just drive by, no? Uh they don't even bother pulling over and saying, excuse me, you need to move your car. And eh you know, even just that, just issue the the ticket so that they know better not to park there the next, you know, next time around. The whole purpose of having a sidewalk is for pedestrians to use it so that they're not on, they're not on the streets, you know, and they're they're safe. And again, many times, I will personally pull over and inform those individuals to please remove your car from the sidewalk, you know? So please just bring more awareness to your officers and uh encourage them to familiarize themselves with with a lot of the laws that that, you know, require them to enforce. Because uh I I feel like, you know, that's one area that we are lacking. Um and then uh you had mentioned earlier about in in your opening statement, you had mentioned something about abuse in timekeeping? Like you you've assessed that that's one of the issues that uh the department is?
I I think I'm pretty much you're saying abusive overtime.
Or abusive overtime. Eh eh and based on those findings that you have seen, I mean, wha? Uh what what actions are being taken to resolve that?
Uh currently, right now, the 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 overtime is only needed if you're gonna uh just to augment manpower. But uh to to do other 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 tasks that is, that can be taken care of on the next busy days, uh those are those are avoided. So it's only when when it's needed.
Got it. So there's no theft in
No, no.
Okay. Uh okay. That's all I have, Chair. Thank you. I have my time.
Thank you, Senator Magofnia. I know we have time constraints because we have another um hearing this afternoon for another individual. But I will, most of my questions were already asked, asked and answered anyways. But I just have a few um follow-up and some recommendations. Um. Oh, uh recently, we've been seeing the weekly statistics come out on the papers about how many responses uh DPS has attended to in the week or the month, or I think it's by the week. And I appreciate that because that is transparency. Um but also, and and also that uh DPS is actually collecting the data because it helps your grants. Um when you reapply or renew or apply for new grants. Federal granters need data.
Yes.
Um but you know, in in line with that transparency and reporting to the public about how many responses the DPS has tended to in the week? Um if you could, and I don't know if this is part of your plan already, but I would also be interested in seeing how many of those uh responses were resolved. You know, that's a, people may perceive that as a negative, so we, I would like to see something positive uh come out of those reports. That was one. Um in the previous administration, the former DPS Commissioner actually restricted the public, including the media, uh from access to that information. And I thought that was, um first of all, uh I uh against the First Amendment, especially to the media, but uh that's a different topic. So I just wanted to bring that up to your attention. Um I thank you for the initiative to collaborate with other law enforcement officers and standardize procedures or cross train, um whatever you guys are doing with that. I think that's a great uh effort. But I'd like to um, you know, uh bring to your attention the the probability of accrediting, going into an accreditation. That way, your grants, you get more federal grants. Uh and that standardizes actually um what your goal is, you know, with other law enforcement agencies. Being accredited actually standardizes everything across the board and you don't even have to reinvent the wheel.
Yes.
Uh that's something I wanted to bring to your attention. Uh also, Senator Mangonya talked a lot about the budget because he's our Chair for Fiscal Affairs and we're gearing up for uh budget hearings with departments. And DPS is one of the biggest uh costs to the government because of its nature. But part of the issue with DPS, and I've asked this of every single DPS Commissioner that since I've been here during budget season, one of the most basic questions I ask is how many cars are in your fleet? And I ask that not because I want to know. I can get that from procurement. I ask because I want the department head to know that. Every single DPS Commissioner that has come before a, in a budget hearing, I ask that simple question. How many vehicles are in your fleet? They don't know. They do not know. That is unacceptable in budgeting. How can you come here and ask me for $200,000 worth of fuel for your operations? And you don't even know how many vehicles you're gassing. You know, that a lot of us are numbers people. So we need a correlation between how many vehicles you have in your fleet, whether it is for patrol, whether it's for official purposes or administrative purposes. I I don't ask that question because I want to know. I ask because I want you to know. I want to make sure you know.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's one of the the issues I have uh during budget season. Uh we ask these questions, but department heads really are not equipped to lead. I've seen a lot in the past. Um so I wanted to alert and bring that to your attention. When it comes to budget, we would love to support departments, but when you give us vague answers, we will give you a vague budget. Um you mentioned that you had insufficient sworn officers on the streets right now, so you have to you have to um pull from other divisions, or is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. You know, here's another budget question. You mentioned that you have insufficient numbers, um you know, manning the streets. How many, as if you were to be confirmed, as a leader, how many would be sufficient? Every department comes here and says, we need more FTEs. Do you know exactly how many it will take to run your department efficiently? And this goes for all departments of the government. Because you know, you can't just come up to the legislature and say, I need more people, no more bodies, without knowing what their um job is. Do you have enough admin people? Do you have? We funded a desk audit for DPS and and FIRE, I believe. Because those are budget questions that we need answered. We wanted to know, do you have the right number of personnel to run your department? Unfortunately, um there was a report, but it was, it was during the COVID season, so um the information was not accurate because police officers were being used to man uh COVID alternate sites and and not performing their actual um work based on their job description. So that will throw off a desk audit. You mentioned again to us to insufficient officers. I hope you consider creating a peace officer reserve as um as an alternate to to supplement your manpower. They may not, and and you've been in the reserves, I know that, um similar to the army reserve or reserve military, uh wherein they only get fringe benefits uh upon thirty days of activation. Sometimes we need them for a shorter period. We don't need to pay their health insurance and the like. So please, I and I hope you look into this and see if it's feasible or sustainable. Um look into that and see if DPS can implement such a program. Um again, there are grants that you can apply for that, that will not uh cost us a dime. And it will also uh increase your capacity. I would like to know, what is your vision for DPS? Where do you see DPS in the next year, in the next four years?
My vision with DPS, uh seeing that uh you'll be successful in the next two years if we continue to uh do what diligently the department's uh goals and objective uh to be more successful and and actually to entice and retain more officers so that we could continue to carry the the services to to the community.
I I wish you luck in in obtaining your goals and for the department. And you also mentioned that you are reorganizing the structure of uh DPS. Here's another budget question that I would like to see every year in a submission for every department. I want to see an organizational chart for the department. Nobody has ever provided that. And it's important for us to know whether, you know, uh Public Works or DPS has um two hundred more employees than another department and how to collaborate and synchronize their efforts so that we're not duplicating services. I I and duplicating positions. I really would like to see that in a budget submission. One of the most serious concerns I have is the capability of DPS to resolve or solve crimes complaints. And I will speak of my personal experience. As you may know, my office was burglarized last July. To date, it has been, I think, six, seven months. I have not met the detective in charge of investigating that crime. While he did uh call my office when I was off island, upon my return, I returned the call. I met with other officers um to try and get an update. I was assured that they would relay the information to this officer. Um. And I have never met, I have never talked to, I've never been visited by the officer, whoever is investigating that crime. Um so that that really, really concerns me. You know, um one of the public comments was uh uh officers need to be paid what they're worth. I'm in favor bud uh performance-based budgeting. You know, um that, no, that's a budget question too. How many complaints have, has DPS received? How many have been resolved? You know, are we paying, are we truly paying the worth of the officer? And I'm not saying that I um with any single officer in mind or any single DPS employee in mind, but it's just a general statement that if we are, and I'm in support of uh raising officer's salary, I do know the stresses that come with it. Um so if we are to pay these officers, you know, and and going back to my personal experience, what is it that this officer has not done their job? Is it lack of motivation? So those are things that I think about. Is it lack of motivation? Is it lack of resources? Is it lack of training? I don't know. We as legislators don't know, but they come here, every department come here, comes here every year and say, give me more money. We need help. What help do you need with? Do you need training? So I I have a serious concern about the lack of um, you know, the resolution of complaints. And I sure, I'm I'm sure I speak for many out there. I've heard from different um people who have said they also don't have any feedback from DPS. So I hope you look into that. I'm not asking for special treatment, obviously. I'm not getting special treatment because I'm, you know, waiting just like everybody else. Uh you mentioned about the real ID. And it's been and it's been talked about, um. You mentioned six hundred thousand, is that six hundred thousand a year, or six thousand, one payment, and everything will be sunshine after that?
A year.
A year? That's steep. Um, but it's something we need to do because we have to comply with it, right?
Yes.
And you mentioned, uh, you are in support of Senator Manglonja's bill, House, uh, Senate Bill, twenty-three fifty-five, I'll give you a copy, and this, uh, proposes to remove the requirement, um, to submit evidence or proof of US citizenship, or, or, uh, US national, or an alien lawfully admitted to the cinema, and you mentioned that you're in favor of that.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we can move with, uh, your bill, Senator Manglonja. That's all I have, I don't want to take up more of your time, I will recognize, uh, Senator Donald Manglonja for the second round.
Thank you, uh, Chair, just one last, uh, question, and this came about, uh, from one of your discussions. Ho- how long is a, uh, an academy cycle? How long does that academy last?
If, if it's gonna be accredited, then, uh, it has to be a six-month period.
Was there one that was planned for this fiscal year, um, or was that, uh, was that never discussed?
It was discussed, but I, I came to a conclusion not to hold one because of a budgetary, uh, issue.
But weren't there officers who had resigned or were let go in the current fiscal year, that we can't, that those monies are now available?
They are, but, uh, currently, some of those, uh, FTEs were unfunded, as soon as they, they be, they, they resign, and, uh, trying to, to hire, uh, only to know that they, they've been, uh, removed. But I still got some, uh, uh, cops programs, uh, vacancies that I need to fill.
Uh, but do those, uh, positions need to go through academy?
No, uh, because I, I changed the, I changed the latitude from, uh, police cadets to police officer one. So basically, I'm, I'm, I'm looking for officers that left the department in good standing, uh, meaning they left because of family, uh, they left because for, uh, education, or they left because of, uh, greener pasture and the other, and they ca- came back home again.
What do you mean, when the, these officers left and then those positions became unfunded? Because that's not
Yeah, what I'm saying is that, there is some that, uh, that, uh, we, we were told that it was funded, only to know they don't, that, uh, they were unfunded, so, that kind of, so, like, uh, the, the police officer two, that, uh, I have, uh, eleven position, only to know that's, uh, only two are available. So, uh, those are the things that, 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 uh, I came about. Uh, that's why I can't hire so much, be, or promote some of the PO ones, so I could free the, the, the bottom, uh, uh, positions, so I could fill that up, but for the pressure right now, uh, there's not much, uh, so there's only like, uh, three or, uh, or five positions that I, I, I can fill for now that are, that are, are funded.
But only for those who were previously or have already sworn in?
Yes.
Okay, and are, are you aware of any, um, OIA monies that are meant to hire more officers?
Um, no, Senator, I wa- was not aware, but, uh, like I said, uh, we're working to, uh, submitting a grant from the cops program, so we can build to hire more officers.
Okay, alright, thank you, uh, Acting Commissioner, are you, Madam Chair?
Thank you, Senator Manglonja, recognize Senator Yeah, I just want to ask, so you're aware, uh, where does the Judicial Building Fund, uh, where should be earmarked now, uh? I believe that we should be finishing up, uh, the, the, the obligation for that, right? Can you look into that, and maybe we can, we can revisit that, I, I'm not sure at this moment, um, that's for fiscal affairs, maybe to, to look into, and, you know, all the tickets that you give out and all that. I, I think those are being earmarked now to, to the Judicial Building Fund, but we should be, uh, uh, coming to, toward the end of that, I'm not sure, but that's something that maybe we can give toward, you know, some of your budgetary needs.
Yes.
Thank you.
Recognize, uh, Senator Magovna for the last
Thank you, thank you, Chair, I just have one question and one recommendation. Um, what's the average turn, um, turnaround time for police reports to be prepared and processed?
Three days.
Three days, okay, uh, because I, I personally, and I've spoken to others who uh, have been waiting for police reports for quite some time now, even months, so just bringing that to your attention. Please, uh, you know, we need to do better, uh, because sometimes, uh, people who are waiting for their police reports needed for insurance purposes, or whatever, you know, whatever the needs are, but it shouldn't take, I would say, more than ten days to put together a police report. Um, and then my recommendation to you, uh, uh, Commissioner, is, I'm not sure if you have driven around um, tourist district, uh, in the evening, specifically on Corotree Avenue, which is the street in front of, uh, Crown Plaza and Hyatt, it is quite dark there in the evening, and as you know, you know, that's, uh, where a lot of tourists, uh, you know, walk around, and, and there's been a lot of, uh, crimes being committed there, I personally, like, our place has been, uh, burglarized at least five times now in the last two to three months. And so I've seen an uptick in, you know, in crimes over in that area, because it is, you know, pretty dark at night. And so my recommendation that I would like to ask, I, I've already spoken to the mayor, I've spoken to DPW, I, I'm not sure who is the proper authority that, that should, you know, put the lights up there, because we have a lot of uh, pedestrians, you know, utilizing the streets there, not just, not just being burglarized, but even like for public safety, right, like the cars?
Yes.
Right, and so I am appealing to you to please, if, if you're not the proper agency, uh, you, I'm not sure who is, whether the mayor, DPW, you know, they can't seem to figure out who it is, but we really do need to put some, uh, proper lighting, um, over there, and maybe a little bit more police presence. I know that when, uh, I think there was a program that was put in place for those, uh, bicyclists to be riding around there, especially in the evening, I mean, we didn't see much of that, but I think now that has stopped, and we have started to see the break-ins again, uh, you know, so I am asking you to please, uh, you know, work with the proper agency to put up the lights, and maybe just have a little bit more police presence in that area, because we do want to protect our image, you know, from our tourists, that we, you know, we are trying to invite tourists here to enjoy our island, but when they come here and they get, uh, you know, uh, a financial violated, you know, that's not the, the story that they bring back with them, and that greatly ha- you know, that has a great impact on our ability to invite more tourists, uh, here, so, um, that's all I have, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Senator Magovna, that will close this portion of the hearing for today, Mr. Makaranas, I thank you for your time today, and for, uh, spending your time to answer our questions, thank you, you are dismissed.
Thank you, ma'am.
This, uh, committee will stand in recess, it is now twelve fifty-nine until, uh, two PM this afternoon.